Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Tuesday, September 2, 2008. Your city council is back from vacation, tanned, fit, ready to spend your money. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular session held July 21 and the special session held August 11, 2008?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been accepted. Communications, I think we have quite a few different things that have arrived in the last month. I know I am in receipt of an email correspondence from Kim Walter that has interest in city council passing a resolution backing a House bill for Equality Ohio, and I think we are going to pass that along to the Community Issues Committee, and I think you are anointed with that one if you would. Other communications? Yes?
Mr. President, I have received an email from Sharon Yulish, who is concerned about the noise on Richland Avenue coming from the highway. She says, "Is there anything we can do to mitigate the noise coming from the highway to Richland Avenue? What we really need is a noise barrier by the side of the highway. This issue has been largely ignored by the city and ODOT for years. In the meantime, what can we do to get the engine brake law enforced? Many thanks for your kind help."
Why don't we add that as an item on the next Street Committee's agenda?
Okay, great, thank you.
Other communications? Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to share that I have been in communications with some concerned community members about the park trails at Sales Park, and maybe they're over trail building or perhaps a lack of maintenance there, or over-maintenance, however you choose to define it. And I did speak with the Director of Arts, Parks and Recreation, Rich Campitelli, and he called me. He was aware of the situation, the concern as well, after speaking with the mayor. And he was getting me up to date on it as well, that it's on his radar, it's something that he's looking into. So I wanted to share that with the community.
And I do know that that was mentioned at the last mayor's staff meeting, so I do know it is being discussed.
Thank you.
Other items of communication anyone wishes to share? Yes, Alahu, member Gosney?
Yes, I have a communication that was sent to council regarding trees. It's a request from Richard Otto that we think about planting trees on Union Street, I think past the cemetery area there. So that's been given to the Tree Commission, and it will be added to the list of target areas.
Near the drive-thru, is that correct?
Yeah, and along, just along the street, that direction.
Member Nysley?
Just wanted to draw to the attention of the community that Athens has received a Healthy Ohio Award, and as part of a campaign by Governor Strickland and the Ohio Department of Health, and it ranks communities, I think, at several different ratings. So we received a gold award, in part to programs that are being held through the County Health Department program, through our Athens City Schools, through our recreation program, and also our bike trail. So those kind of things that make for a healthier community promoting physical activity.
Very good. It's nice to be recognized. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the financial reports from the Auditor's Office for July of this year.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The reports have been accepted.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications anyone wishes to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Oh, I probably have a few here, since we've gone for a while. First one, as anybody might have noticed coming into town, we have new traffic patterns on Congress with the bike lane. In particular, I want to mention the crosswalk. That is now officially a pedestrian crosswalk on Richland near Porter. It's been designated and marked as such. It actually means that motorists and cyclists have to yield to pedestrians in the marked area. You'll see that we eliminated one of the two crosswalks that were there earlier, the southern one, and we've extended the other one out. We'll have lighting there, and of course, you know, like, we have bike paths in that area too now, so you want to be aware that there's bicycles going through the bike lanes. We have some maps of it if need be. I can always pass those around, have it a later date if you need them. I think that covers everything else unless Chris wants to add anything else to that. She's, you know?
I think there are going to be two more markings that are going to go up in the center of the, on either side of the crosswalk, and they'll be about four foot high, and they will be lit, as you had said. So there's still some additional marking to go up, and it will have notice saying that it's specifically designated a crosswalk and that the drivers are to yield to pedestrians.
And the bike lanes, of course, are going both up and down the hill. In the climbing lane, of course, you know, motorists going, turning into Mulberry will have to yield to the bikes traveling that way, going to President. And as you notice, President is now 45-degree angle parking. This is a trial to see what it looks like. Some of the members of Uptown, Court Street businesses have been talking about some of this as well, but we try, we're going to try it on President first and see what it looks like. Let's see, other things. I received some preliminary draft flood insurance map, rate maps, to look at. I think I have one copy. I'll pass them to Paul Logue over time after I peruse them. This is looking at some of the new data and new maps being drawn. I got a report from Egan sometime this summer, let's see, it was from August 15, finding a higher conductance since well H1. This is by the well hospital, it's a monitoring well. Higher conductance, conductance of chloride ions, which means we're getting some salt in there. And I bring this up just because one of the committee members of, you know, committee meetings should actually include something to do about what we want to do with our salt bin, which is at the back end, and/or what do we want to do in that general direction.
Let's add that to our next Environmental Committee. Add that on the agenda, I'm sorry? Or utilities, one or the other?
It has to fall in what we want to do in terms of, you know, the discussion of past couple, five years, I think, has been moving the service garage out of the area, replacing the salt bin with some kind of larger platform. I believe there was a report sometime in June about the well, the service garage soil area, but I've just got it in the past week, so I haven't really, it's a short report, but I haven't really digested it well. I want to let you know that there are two public hearings in progress, one from the Planning Commission. This will be September 18 at noon, that's Thursday. That has to do with your Resolution R 308, which was the outside operations in respect to noise on the B3 area. It's actually been altered to the B2D area after the mayor's conversation within the Planning Commission.
Paul, could you repeat that one again?
Public hearing.
Yeah.
9:18, that's a Thursday, at noon up here, and it has to do with the language in terms of ceasing outdoor operations after a certain hour in the B2D zone. Your Resolution R 308, I think, talked about the B3 zone. So there is a slight variance for your, from your resolution to what we've been discussing. The other one, of course, we're going to have a public hearing September 30 at 7:00 PM in these chambers for our transit system grant, since we're reapplying for that, and we go through that process. It'll probably include some, I think we're talking about some maybe minor route changes, but I don't know yet at this point.
What time?
7:00.
Thank you.
And I think that covers it all. I want to mention that Andy has been activated for National Guard at this point, so he's not here, at least this week. I don't know how long, well, hurricanes.
Oh, we're not talking Iraq again?
No, we're not talking Iraq, we're talking storms. And I don't know what the circumstance is, he's just been activated, and we'll find out what he's got to do, because he'll have to do it.
Yes, member Bing?
I'd like to ask the mayor if, I was talking to Chris Fall about the B2D thing about a month ago, and she said that it was her understanding, and we've never had really professional interpretation of the zoning code, but that since it wasn't an use issue, there would not be a grandfathering happening in those locations. So in other words, adding an attribute such as outside operations could happen even in places that already had them. Now, I may have misunderstood her, but before we get it back, could we have some clue as to what will happen with respect to that?
Okay, so what you're asking?
What I'm asking is what her...
Because it's use, there's no grandfathering.
It is not a use, yeah. It is not use, use is grandfathered. The whole non-conformity thing could bear, I think, some professional scrutiny, but that certainly would have an impact on the amount of discussion and talk about that.
Okay.
I mean, I wouldn't want it to be put in some kind of personal basis, but I know she said that, it was her opinion, she's had quite a bit of work in zoning, so there you are.
Okay, I actually did put that question to Paul Logue earlier today when we were discussing the public hearing, the grandfather status of many things, because I understand topography you can't change, but some of the uses and some of the other conditions you may be able to change.
Yeah, and once again, let me clarify, it was Chris Fall?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and last thing I did just...
Who has a PhD in planning?
There you go. I did receive a letter from Renee Milton, PhD, concerning the condition of Jeff Hill, saying it's in bad shape, which we knew already. And I bring that up because I'd still like to pursue assessment for the joint property owners eventually if we're going to redo it, and that's one thing I bring up. That's all I really have.
Other questions for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hecht?
I just thought I'd mention, I think everybody got the budget timeline that I sent out. That's something we've used in the past, and anybody who's been on council knows that. I just want to make it clear that that's up to mainly the Finance Committee to guide that, but the dates and topics are all adjustable, although my revenue report will be sometime the end of February, or October if possible, just to give everybody an idea on that one. The rest of it is up to you guys. That's it.
Member Sands?
Let me just respond quickly to that. I'm anticipating having a discussion, the second committee meeting in September, about the budget process. Obviously, we're not going to make any decisions at that time, but we're going to talk about this, this process that the auditor's brought up, and hopefully map out our plans for the next three months to deal with the budget for, it's our responsibility to deal with the budget for next year, 2009.
Anything else, Kathy?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
City Law Director Patrick Lang?
Got the news for you tonight, Mr. President?
Thank you. On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 9008, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with the Ohio Valley Museum of Discovery. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would like to move to adopt this ordinance, 09008.
Second.
Briefly, this, this is the third reading, so we have had ample time to look at it and discuss and explore, but this is allowing us, or giving us the opportunity to allow the mayor to enter into, authorize into a lease agreement with the Ohio Valley Museum of Discovery to use the city wreck land, particularly the old house, I'm not quite sure what the title is of that structure.
It's usually referred to as the Greens Keepers House.
Apologies.
To accommodate the Museum of Discovery, for a children's museum, in accordance with this lease attached. So briefly, that's it in a nutshell there.
Member Phillips?
Just would like to remind folks that I have declared a conflict, because I serve on the board of this organization, so I won't be voting.
Member Sands?
I just had a question. This was put on hold or tabled for a while because the board, did this move directly through three readings?
Correct.
Okay.
And I did speak with the mayor earlier today and the City Service Safety Director, and just checking with them about their thoughts and how it was written. I think they were aware of this agreement, supportive, aware...
Okay, I guess I was just prompted by the fact that nobody from that group is here tonight except our board member on council. So I just was hoping they were ready to go. I assume that they are.
Member Bing?
Mr. President, I'm a little bit concerned, not in a major way, but a little bit concerned that there's no escape clause in this, should it become necessary. And I was, since we aren't saying the attached lease agreement, I'm assuming that it could go in with such a, with such a provision, that we would be able to get out of it at some point in time. I mean, I, I must admit that the second time, second reading, I wasn't totally focused on this particular issue, so, but here I am back, and I had Debbie check for me and read carefully, and it's not in there.
The one thing that I'm remembering, and I'm kind of surprised somebody isn't here to speak to it also, is that the architect was going to be looking at it and letting them know what it would take to bring that up to a public, public building, and that the organization was going to be deciding after they got that report back if they wanted it or not. Is that, does someone know the answer to that?
Perhaps. Earlier today, I did speak with, with Director of Arts, Parks and Recreation, Rich Campitelli, who, who did open up the facility and let an architect engineer in, and they looked around and made assessments. I think that was maybe a month and a half or so ago, a month ago perhaps. I wasn't exactly aware, he wasn't citing a certain date, but, so, and they are aware of the amounts that it looks like they'll need to bring it up to code for ADA and compliance and other issues. And it did seem to be a relative decent size of money, but I think that they're aware of that.
Other comments? Mayor Wile?
Again, this is, the lease agreement that you have in front of you there is, can be changed if need be. You're just authorizing me to look into it. You obviously, Nancy, want a, a clause to kick out if need be from either both parties, or...
I would hope that, you know, because we were challenged by one of our constituents about this, an 80, a 90-day something, or whatever. I mean, what I heard was, you know, it was portrayed to us that it was, we were losing this wonderful opportunity for the structure, and what I heard from people was that they weren't going to use it because it couldn't fit the derelict machines through the door, so it wasn't of any use to the recreation program, and, you know, so to me, it seems like there is no other use for it. But should one emerge, I guess I would like to see us be able to at some point change.
Nancy, the clerk has pointed out to me under Section 1 of the ordinance that it basically says, "In accordance with the lease attached here to and incorporated herein by reference." So the lease could not be changed if we pass this to include an escape clause, if that's a concern of yours.
When was the last time? It says authorizing a lease agreement with the Ohio Valley. It doesn't say anything. It's sort of like the question that we had with respect to the landlord-tenant form.
But that doesn't say that it's attached and incorporated.
All right.
Yeah, that's, that may or may not be an issue for you, but literally, that's...
In accordance with, is that, there's no wiggle worm there? Patrick, is there wiggle worm in accordance with? Oh, I know, law directors love it when you ask them on the...
Put them on the spot.
On the spot.
We love it.
Let's put Patrick on the spot, come on.
That's what the clerk is referring to.
Can we start up the Jeopardy soundtrack?
I'm not opposed to it, I just think we need to hurry this up.
Incorporated here again by reference, the lease that is attached has no escape clause.
So is it being asked that we would just strike, and the easiest thing would just be to strike that language referencing the attached? We'd need an amendment, we'd need to withdraw the motion to pass. The motion to adopt on that.
And then he can change it.
If you can help walk me through it, Sharon.
What we would need for you to do is for you to withdraw your motion to adopt.
Okay.
The person that made the second withdrawal, their second.
Sure, okay.
Then you make a motion to amend for the law director's instruction, and then we will read it.
Okay.
For the first time, and if you've got votes, you can suspend. If you don't, you can take it either through three readings or...
Use a pretty face in front of mine.
So, do you wish to withdraw your motion to adopt?
Yes, I will withdraw my motion to adopt.
Two, second.
I will withdraw my second.
Okay. Motion and a second to withdraw, so we now have that. Now you are, can move to amend.
Mr. President, may I, I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance, which is 0908.
And I think what you're asking to do, per the law director's direction, is under Section 1 to delete what language?
It's just to...
In accordance with the lease attached here to and incorporated.
So just period after museum?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that...
Sure.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that, and we'll work with council on this.
Second to this motion.
Okay. Motion and a second to amend Ordinance 09008 as stated. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Guess not. All those in favor of adoption of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Is it possible at this moment not to suspend?
If you have five votes, it is.
Okay.
Six votes. So you've got to have them all.
Okay. So I can put a motion out there to suspend the rules?
Yes, you can.
And I think I'll do so, thank you. Can I buy a vowel?
It feels about like that, doesn't it? Motion and a second to consider Ordinance 090 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension?
The reason would be that we have had three readings on this, and there was, we just took care of a major problem, and we will know if they can use it shortly anyway.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of suspending council rules on Ordinance 90?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. At this moment, then I would like to pass, move to adopt this particular ordinance, as it has been suspended, changed, and amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion on all this? All those in favor of adoption of Ordinance 9008?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted.
I'd like to briefly just thank everyone for walking into that, I appreciate it.
Sit right up on my chair.
That's how we seem to do business lately. Resolutions for third reading. Resolution 0608, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Sands, I'm glad you get to explain what this does, I used to have to.
Mr. President, if I move adoption of Resolution 0608?
Second.
This, this is not that complicated. We, we know that the county collects real estate taxes, and we get, as the city, we get a small portion of that real estate collection. The city of Athens, most of the city of Athens is in Athens Township, and this summary from the Budget Commission, which includes the county auditor, the county prosecutor...
County treasurer.
County treasurer, is suggesting that from the properties in Athens Township, the city would receive $651,625 in real estate taxes in 2009. From those properties that fall in Kanan Township, we would receive $33,716. This is all projections from 2009. These are projections from the Budget Commission, and we are, we are voting to accept these projections, and then if that's the way it falls, then we will receive these monies.
If we don't pass this resolution, then we don't get our inside millage. The county auditor has to have this.
So you can choose to vote against it if you wish.
If you're silly.
No, there's dumb, and then there's damn dumb, and that would be damned. And I would remind council after we pass this, and I hope we do, that this is one of those tax things that every member of council must sign. So further discussion on Resolution 0608?
That's an issue one.
All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. I'll fill in the dates and I'll sign the first. On to announcements and other business. One of the things that I have before us is a, city council needs to appoint a public records hub off, is that the official title?
Serena.
Serena. The public records designee?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a little better.
Now, we can either make it our clerk, or if everybody would like to take three hours of public records training, we could all be that. But I suggest, and I nominate, I think I'm allowed to, Clerk Debbie Walker to be our public records designee, to be in charge of public records and in charge of what gets disposed and when, and where things are kept, and all of that.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Debbie, you have one more title. You wear it well. What other announcements and other business would we like to deal with tonight?
I'll need a Planning and Development Committee next week.
Okay, I have a feeling we're going to have several committees next week. So Planning and Development, got there, Deb's in?
Week after that for mine. I like to go back on the schedule every other week, every other...
Oh, okay.
Number 27.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else on this side? Jumping over this side, member Gosney?
Yes, I would, I would like to reserve space for an Environment Committee meeting.
Okay. Member Nysley?
I would like to have a Transportation Committee meeting.
Okay. And the ever-present?
The ever-present Finance Committee. At this point, we, we don't have anything to discuss, but it's a whole week away.
You mean after a month?
Really?
We have taken a vacation more than I ever remember before. You know, I also, has this been dealt with?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. We have received a liquor permit transfer to Busy Day Companies LLC, doing business as Busy Day Market, 30 West Stimson Avenue, and this is Jerry Jones DBA Campus Convenience Store, is where it's coming from. If anyone wishes to respond to this, we have until September 25, '08, and it is a B permit. Hope I read that one correctly, or is, no, I'm sorry, it's a C1, C2 permit. Didn't think B sounded correct. Any other announcements? Member Sands?
Mr. President, member Nysley just reminded me that we need a Community Issues Committee meeting. We do have representatives from our local Clean Committee coming to speak to us, planning to come to speak to us regarding a plan that they have developed for Uptown Recycling.
And also that one other agenda item that I could give.
That you passed my way.
Okay.
Jim?
Anything else?
As long as I'm not going to probably be here, could we postpone it till the 27th?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Could we postpone the Clean thing till the 27th?
We have, they, for several reasons, we postponed it several times.
None of which were my issues, so.
I will, if it's, I, I'll have to talk to the Chair.
Who's in charge?
Chair. At this point, I think it's Linda Phillips that I need to contact. So I'll, I'll talk to her tonight or tomorrow and see, but I know they've been planning on this for a while. We can, we can take notes for it.
Well, it does pertain to my committee.
Okay, yes.
Member, Mayor Wile?
Uh-huh, gotcha.
I did. Just when I thought I had it behind me.
Yeah. In terms of finance personnel, I think I saw an email coming from Service Safety Director about adding money to the, some of the refund lines, and I don't know if you got that or not, I think you saw it. So that could be part of your, on your agenda. Also, I want to put something out that I probably should have earlier. Has anybody heard anything about those community cookouts that were supposed to be happening?
Yes.
I got an email from Mike Hess. It was bigmatic on when it was occurring. There might be two of them. Does anybody know? Because last time, the council was invited on that, and I'm sure it's coming up sooner than later.
I have an email here from Mickey Hart about-
That's an international student.
International students on Friday, September 5th, asking for at least a representative from city council. So I was going to corral everybody afterwards.
I'm attending.
They're planning to go, so you, you'll, two of you will speak for this time. They're asking city council, what was the time? Six, six to 8:30 Friday, September 5th. It's going to be at the Dairy Lane Shelter House.
Okay. Putt putt.
It is a putt putt.
Okay, so I take nobody's heard anything about the-
The other ones I haven't heard.
Okay.
And that might be from Judy Piercy. Judy Piercy's now taken Mike Hess's position.
Okay. But they, they must be coming up soon, that's why I was asking, because it-
They probably are, okay.
Do we have any other announcements? An opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.